Good evening, it is Wednesday, December 6, 2017 at seven o'clock. Welcome to the school committee meeting. We are being recorded live for broadcast and for future rebroadcasting. And we will start with the pledge. Tonight we have Shawn Pellerin and Ashley Arnold here from the Douglas Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Arnold and I'm here with Shawn Pellerin. We are student council members in grades six and eight. Today, we are here to give an update on the middle school news.
Thanksgiving break was our first vacation from our busy school routine. We had three half-days for parent-teacher conferences beforehand as well. Report cards were issued and available on iPass and now second trimester has started. The snowflake drive has just begun and we hope to bring many presents for families in need this holiday season.
On December 14th, the middle school band and chorus concert is being held at 6:00 PM. They have worked, been working extremely hard in preparation and are very excited to display their accomplishments.
December 20th is a very eventful day for our school. The sixth grade Tiger Bucks auction is scheduled to be held at seven, at the seventh grade is going on a field trip. Tiger bucks are amounts of credit logged by teachers to reward students for good behavior. The students will take part in using their Tiger Bucks to bid against each other for donated prizes. As well as the Tiger Bucks auction, on this day, the seventh grade will be going on a field trip. They're going to see A Christmas Carol at the Hanover Ferreter in Worcester. This trip helps the students explore and compare literature and play a viewing, a viewing performance at firsthand.
A couple of weeks ago, athletes tried out for the boys and girls JV and middle school basketball teams. Practices have started already and first games are approaching quickly. This basketball season looks promising for all the teams that have been chosen. Indoor track has just opened up to the seventh and eighth graders as well. This new opportunity has piqued a lot of interest and runners are beginning to practice.
This last month has been a very productive. The start of second trimester has marked a turning point for this school year and there are many bright things waiting in the near future.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. Is there anybody in the audience, you guys can, you don't have to stay, unless you want to join us, you can join us.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, you can go back to your seats. Whichever you want.
Hey, Ashley, I just have to say, I remember when you were just like so little and now you're like sitting here in middle school.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to public comment and communications if anybody has anything that they'd like to bring to us. Seeing none, we will move on to the accounts table report.
So, back on 11/22, we had fourteen batches of account payables that are reviewed totaling $328,000 and change. Most of that was from the general fund, about $187,000 from the general fund and another 117 from Circuit Breaker that made up $300,000 of the total $328,000 there. All your details attached here for review, but no issues with it?
Very good, and I know that it's on the consent agenda, the discussion about an alternate designated signer for the accounts payable warrants. Do you want to just have that discussion now? Is there anybody who's clamoring to be a alternate signee in the event that Brett just could do it? When do they have to be signed by? What are the days usually and what time?
Well, during, it would be during the day and typically it's on Thursdays.
So after two, is that, is that a time that the team could come in or are they too late?
I think that that could work.
Because you work full-time, Julian works, so I can do it, that's fine.
Okay, and it's just as an alternate, you know, when Brett's not available?
Yeah, they usually give you a couple of days' notice to say they're going to be ready on, you know, Thursday.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great, so Julie Finnegan will be the alternate. And then Julie also brought up a good point about all the backup. Perhaps that we can all get the top sheet of this, but maybe only make one copy of the backup for us to view at the table. If anybody really wants to go through it, otherwise we're wasting so much paper.
An ink.
An ink. If anybody wants to go through it, it is still available to go through at Central office. Does anybody have any issues with that? Okay. Very good, thank you. So that brings us into the meeting minutes from November 15th, 2017. Did anybody see any changes that needed to be made? Have any questions or comments on it? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from November 15th, 2017 as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a letter to dispose of grounds equipment from Jeff Collette, the facilities manager, where he's seeking school committee approval to dispose of a hedge trimmer. It's been determined that repair costs would exceed the cost to replace this unit. This trimmer has already been replaced. The replacement cost was $299.95. Does anybody have any objections with disposing of the old one?
None.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the disposal of the hedge trimmer.
Second. All those in favor? Thanks. I'm going to turn the French River Education Center oil bid over to Mrs. Keegan, please.
Okay, thank you. The Douglas Public Schools participates in the French River Education Center collaborative bid process among eighteen school districts and three municipalities that participate in that. And we did have our bid opening on November 13th. There were five bids and Santa Energy won the bid at 2.0611 per gallon. Prices ranged from the 2.0611 per gallon to the highest was 2.1559 per gallon. And we did bid for our own school district for 91,000 gallons, I mean 85,000 gallons, sorry. The estimated contract value is $175,193.50 and that's an increase over the FY18 of $7,844.50. So, you know, pretty good prices. I mean compared to, we were a little bit aggravated, went up a little bit, being business managers, but then we all reminded ourselves of a few years back when it jumped up to almost $4 a gallon, so we quieted down very quickly. Stopped complaining.
Where are they out of?
So...
North Pole.
That poor guy at the bid opening, I'll tell you, he had to listen to about an hour's worth of those kinds of jokes. To be honest with you, he's from another state, but actually they have, in Bridgeport, Connecticut and among other places, but the oil will be coming from Bridgeport, Connecticut. That was one of the questions that we had for him, we wanted to make sure that, we always ask, you know, how large is your facility? How many trucks do you have? We're so afraid of maybe not having enough trucks, how far away are you? Just make sure that we get the deliveries. So, he was grilled for over an hour and then he had another hour over the Santa joke, so. But anyway, so we'll be looking for a vote to approve it. So all the municipalities and school districts have to approve it before the contract is finalized.
Does anyone have any questions?
Move to accept Santa Energy's bid of 2.0611 per gallon for the purchase of number two fuel oil for fiscal year 2019 pursuant to the French River Education Center Inc. number two fuel oil invitation for bids.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
The licensing agreement between the Douglas Public Schools and the Wyton Community Center. My question about this was, are we behind?
Oh, yes, we are. We usually do this in June of the prior year. And then I realized when I went to send out the first invoice that we hadn't signed the agreement. So there are not any changes, there are no changes to the agreement from the prior year. I did have Mrs. Social look at it just to make sure that there weren't any changes that does affect her building. Make sure she was still happy with the arrangements there, she was fine. I did check with Wyton Community to make sure they were fine. We did make a number of changes two years ago with the facility where the, the space they're using and we really like the way it's set up now because it's all in one area of the building. We did make that change there. We did increase to, it was a substantial amount in FY15, so we thought that, you know, it's still a reasonable amount that we are charging. And the way that, you know, that we look at it too is they are servicing our students and children of Douglas, so. This is, I'm sorry?
How's their enrollment? Is it, any idea, is it up or down in your view?
To be honest with you, no, no I don't, for this year, I do not know, no. I will ask though. I will ask. And they've always, they've always been full as far as whether or not they have a waiting list or anything like that. You know, as far as that goes, yeah, actually they have always been full. No other changes whatsoever to the agreement. From the prior year.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the licensing agreement between the Douglas Public Schools and the Wyton Community Center for July 1st, 2017 through June 30th of 2018.
So moved, said it so well, I want to repeat it.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now we'll move over to Mr. Means.
Okay, so superintendent report. Just one thing I wanted to start with that, to bring to everybody's attention is we made, I wanted to make everybody aware that we made some modifications out back during the recess time at the two schools. We've procured some cones and barriers just to put out that are easily moved, just as a safety barrier. We will be talking with the town and sharing it with them as well, but I wanted you to know that we did this, I think yesterday was the, when we got the barriers. Came to our attention that cars and vehicles are using that when there is recess in there, so our thought was that if we put some barriers out there that are easily moved, they're just a cone and a bar going across that can be easily moved. It just will get people to slow down and make it a little bit safer out there. So, just wanted, in case you hear anything about that, we did that starting yesterday, I think, or today it was, maybe today, I think. The first thing on the report is for Mr. Romano from the high school to share with us his presentation on the Douglas High School performance on advanced placement exams.
Good evening, and before I go over the data, I do want to do a couple plugs. Our winter concert is tomorrow at the high school here at 7:00 PM. Love to have people come out and join us for that. And the winter sports season begins on Friday with girls' basketball at home. The JV game is at 5:00 and the varsity is at 6:30, so. All right, advanced placement, it all works. So advanced placement is a program that's created by the college board, the same people that do the SATs. And the idea is that high school students take college-level courses and at the end of the year they take an exam, that's also provided by the college board. And if the student gets a, at least a three on a five-point scale, most colleges will accept AP courses for college credit. So, my daughter, for example, basically took her entire first semester of college in high school, which was great for when the college bills came in. So, it's a great opportunity for kids, also shows that they're capable of college-level work. Even if a student doesn't get the qualifying score, just the fact that they challenged themselves to take the course, which they're very challenging, looks great on a student's application for college, so. These next two, this slide and the next one, I continued to track, as Mr. Means had been tracking, our success of students who passed the AP exams going back to 2007. So these are our totals over eleven years in various subjects. Had a couple of milestones this year. US government politics, over 100 students have passed that one. And the AP language and composition, that's an 11th grade AP exam, hit over 200 this year. Oops, there we go. Over here, a few of the courses are up there, like you see like a one, those are online courses, so a student can choose to take an online course too. It's already a very challenging course, but we've had some students take them online, so we're not running courses of like one student, but those are students who took them through VHS. And we did, last year, we had hit 1,000 qualifying scores since 2007, so this year we have gone over 1,000. So we average just under about 100 passing scores per year on AP exams.
Is there, do you mind if I ask a question?
Please.
Is there an added expense, whether it be through VHS or just having a teacher for the curriculum for an AP course?
There, so for the student, there is, in the sense that the student has to pay for the exam, for example, which, you know, you can get a discount for free reduced lunch students. So there is that expense. For us, in a lot of ways, it basically replaces like a section of honors that we might have run before. So instead of having like two sections of honors, English for seniors, we might run a section of AP and a section of honors. So, I wouldn't really say that there's a significant cost in that sense.
With the virtual high school students that are taking it, we secure so many seats during the course of the year, so there's no additional expense for them to take.
Oh, yeah. That's just, that's part of our allotment of 20 or 25 seats.
It's really, it's a great use because you wouldn't be able to do, you know, a course, a course that we can't offer, or if you only have one student who's genuinely interested in it, you wouldn't take a teaching assignment for one student. That's why the online is an interesting component. And we're pretty particular that they, if we offer it in the classroom, you can't take it online, you need to take it in the classroom.
Yeah, so there, I'm sorry, there isn't any added cost. So, up there are total enrollments going back for the past 11 years. This year, the enrollment's at 154, so it's holding steady, but the classes, the junior and senior classes the last couple of years have been somewhat smaller. So, in general, they're holding pretty steady. Lot of numbers here. But the point of this is that we do better than the national and, or excuse me, the state and global average in a lot of our exams. We're well above state average in literature and composition and US government. Now, US history took a dip this year. It's the same guy, sometimes we'll dip because they're small sample sizes, they're class, they're small classes, 10, 11, 12 kids sometimes. In the US history case, the test actually changed and it just kind of shows the need to continue to invest in ongoing PD in order to make sure that our staff are able to deliver the content right. So this is, you know, a teacher who's been at 90% and now he's 90% passing and took a significant dip. A few of the other courses, biology, environmental science, both above state average. So, chemistry was taught by a pretty new teacher. I have a lot of faith that she's going to improve her scores this year. Physics, the, it's a new teacher teaching it this year. What he's running into is there's a foundation level of knowledge that students have to have leading up to it. And I'm not sure that his kids this year have that, but we're revamping curriculum to make sure that that happens. And Spanish was phenomenal, she had a great year.
If I could just jump in real quick on that, Josh. The chemistry, actually she just left, I walked into her just about 10 minutes ago. She was leaving the building, so she was still here working, she's a young chemistry teacher. And very committed to what she's doing, but sort of, she's a biology chem and her real passion was biology, but we convinced her to do the chem. And she was a first-year teacher who took on the added experience of, A, training right before the start of the school year and then teaching it that very first year. So last year was her very first year, she was hired in August, trained in August, started teaching it in August. So, we anticipate that it'll be a little bit stronger. I would tell you that the first year we offered AP chemistry, we had a 0.00. First year we did it. And it's continued to increase over time. So, there's no question, and the physics is the same thing. We had a new teacher last year and now we have a new teacher again this year. So the consistency there is a little bit problematic, but I'm confident the chemistry will come up and the physics will come up as well.
All right, so some of the individual ones. AP language and composition, again, this is, this is a great one for students going to college. And this is the one, I think we have the highest numbers in this one, because it teaches a lot of analytical thinking, analytical writing, analytical reading. Great one for college prep.
You said it doesn't count if it's below three?
It, it won't count for college credit, colleges won't give credit. Again, still looks great on the transcript that the student challenged themselves. AP literature, phenomenal scores there. So, that's, the previous one is for 11th graders, this one's for seniors. The drop-off in numbers is because a lot of colleges, if a kid takes two years of AP English, they'll usually only give them credit for one year. So a lot of kids opt to not take it the second year and take other AP courses instead. Because when a student's taking more than three AP courses, they're really challenged, they're really, really pushing themselves. And this is the one that kids tend to drop so that they can take some of the other ones. But phenomenal success rates, that's Emily Mayo. This is the AP chem, like Mr. Means said, new teacher, we think she'll do better. AP bio, it's small sample but great success there, that's Mr. Thayer. Same with AP environmental, Mr. Wagenheim. Small sample but great performance by the students. AP physics, this is the one, you know, again, it's a very tough test too. And AP physics I is relatively new, they revamped that test a couple of years ago too. AP calc AB, great success rates by Ms. Brainy. We've offered BC in the past as well. We didn't offer that last year, but we're looking on how we can kind of arrange curriculum so that more kids can take that AP calc BC. These levels of calculus that I didn't even know existed when I was in college, as an English and history major. AP stats, it goes up and down, a lot of kids take stats, it's a great course for kids to have before they go off to college. I wish I had had stats before I went to college. It goes up and down, this one, we're working on this one too. Government politics, great success there, lot of fives in government and politics, five, that's the top score. AP micro, I'm pretty certain that all those kids had never taken an economics course before they sat down to take that course. It's a very challenging one, not one that I would have been particularly adept at teaching myself, so. And it's the only school I've ever been at that offered AP micro.
I was going to mention that, if you recall, one of the things that we showed you, the course offerings and did some comparisons, we're probably the only school district in the area that continues to offer the microeconomics.
Yeah, that's a rare one.
Is there any regular economics classes?
No, what they basically have is what they've gotten in history courses.
So their first exposure is in AP.
AP US history, we talked about, you know, again, the need to keep teachers current in it is huge, but there's an investment in that though too. The training sessions that they do, they're usually a week long. I went to St. Johnsboro College for a week when I did mine, great food, but it's very intense and a great preparation program for it. But if you're missing that prep piece, it really is hard to teach the test.
And US history historically has had phenomenal results.
90%, in a very tough test.
It's been unbelievable, for some reason, last year, well, like you said, the new test is part of it and being prepared for the new test.
And that's a very tough test anyway, because, you know, with, like with English, if you can analyze a poem, it doesn't matter if you've never read that particular poem they ask you about in the test. If they ask you a question about the Kennedy administration, you don't know anything about the Kennedy administration. You can't work your way through it, you just, you know, so it's very content-based. Spanish language and culture, this is a new one for us, 100% success rate, the four kids, the class is growing this year, it's up to seven.
And if I could, that class of four was a combination, remember we've talked about how we've had to combine classes, so a group of honors-level students were taking it along with the AP students at the same time. So it wasn't a class of four students, it was a class of probably 11 students, but we had, some students did not choose to go to the AP level, so we combined them. So we could still give the kids the opportunity to take the AP test.
Yeah, and that actually is the way the course is running this year too. There are seven AP kids and then like seven or 10 Spanish.
Honor Spanish five, I think.
Yeah, honor Spanish five.
What's the minimum size you'll have for an AP class?
I wouldn't want to run them with, I really don't want to run them with less than seven.
We've done, usually it's been 10. You saw some of those numbers that dropped, doesn't, what we start with in August might not always be what we finish with. And so, most of the kids know that by October 1st, if this is not for you, you need to jettison and take something else.
And it does, sometimes a few kids will opt not to take the test.
Do the whole course and not take the test.
I think because they're figuring they're not going to do well. So overall, we are well above state and national, state, national and global averages in our success rates. AP is very challenging, you're asking a high school student to take a college-level course and honestly, I kind of think they're more difficult than a lot of undergraduate college-level courses. We are working on a plan to try to improve in the areas that I think that we need to. For example, we used to call it lay the foundation and I think that you guys did when you were associated with the MIMZI group. MIMZI was a Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative that came in and they did a lot of professional development with teachers, helped build the programs up to where they are. So I think that prepping more kids as freshmen and sophomores to be ready for juniors is sort of the way to go. So for example, history courses, you do more work with primary source documents and then they're more familiar with how to use those, which is a big part of the US history test. Physics, one of the big things is to revamp and strengthen our, the physics courses that we have before kids take the AP. I think that that's the way that we can, that we should work on that.
How do the AP classes work with a student's transcript? Is it, is it based on the test score?
No, it's, on their transcript, it's based on the score that they earn, although it is a weighted grade, so they, it's almost 10. So basically, like getting an 80 in an AP course is essentially like, it weighs it as a 90 in the student's transcript.
The actual score on the test. Honor's level has a gradation as well, so if you, if you take college prep, it's a straight number. Honor's level, there's an increase in the AP, you get an increase, so the grade point average reflects the challenge of the course.
The scores don't appear in the transcripts, because we actually don't get the scores for seniors until after they graduate, we get them midsummer.
And they don't impact the grade on the transcript?
It doesn't, no. So, there's another program that goes with AP and that, they recognize individual students who have excelled at the test. So AP scholars are students who score, get a qualifying score in three or more AP exams. They have to average three on all of their exams. AP scholar with honors, average score of 3.25 and they score at least a three on four or more exams. Scholars with distinction, average score of 3.5 and score at least three on five or more exams. And then for the national AP scholar, we have had those at Douglas High School in the past. They have to have an average score of four on every test that they've taken and they have to score four or above on eight tests. A lot of high school kids don't take eight over the course of their time. So, not particularly surprised, we don't have a scholar with, a national AP scholar this year, we have in the past. But this, the class of 2017 that just graduated had 10 students recognized as AP scholars. One student recognized as an AP scholar with honor and six recognized as AP scholars with distinction. Those are, those are huge numbers and I do, I don't actually know these students unfortunately. Mr. Means does.
So you've got Megan Briggs, you've got Victoria Desalets, Rachel and Dylan, kind of the same shirts. Nice look. We didn't plan that. So, somebody named Connor Grady and Shannon King, Olivia Willett, Maddie Peck, and Rebecca Rockney.
Now, I do know this next student, because we do have one student, Alec Goldenberg, I played soccer with him in a soccer practice, I ran track with him Monday, last Friday rather. I was still hurting on Monday. So Alec is a member of the class of 2018, so he's a senior this year. He has already qualified as an AP scholar, so he's already met that benchmark. So by the end of this year, I anticipate that he may have moved up into the scholar with honors or scholar with distinction category. So Alec, I do know, he's already going to make that award. We've won AP scholar with honor.
So that's Shawn Murphy, graduated last year, yep.
And then our scholars with distinction.
Okay, so Grant and Taylor. I think Grant would have been seven and I think Taylor would have been seven exams with qualifying scores. Just missing that, the national.
National.
Rory and Meredith.
I wanted to hear you pronounce her last name, I practiced it today.
Chemany.
That's not how they had me practice it.
So Matt Sossier and Pat Sullivan and Sophie Thorson.
A lot of these kids were athletes too, huh?
Yeah, they were, or band, band chorus, or all of those things. So, thank you, so one of the things before Josh steps down is that we had a 52% success rate this year, which was a dip, which most schools would be happy to be going up to a 52. So we've been averaging 63, 64, 65, somewhere in that ballpark over the years. One of the things that is very obvious is... One of the things that is very obvious is the drop in enrollment is having an impact on numbers of students participating. So, that's one of the, one of the pieces that, that's an issue. Some changes in testing, as Josh mentioned, and also changes in staffing. So, that was just that one of those years. And I'm pretty confident that we'll continue to be at that number. I don't know that we'll ever get back up to those numbers of participation in the two hundreds, because our numbers have come down in enrollment. So, I don't, I just don't see us having that many students and taking them in junior and senior year. We, at this point, do not have any sophomores taking any AP, so it's really just a junior and senior class. So, that's part of it. I think, I think you'll see us being more in the area of one fifty, one sixty, one seventy for participation going forward. I just don't see us with the enrollments to get us back up to the two hundred number. Performance-wise, that's, that's all based on how students do and so forth. The upside to it is, our kids are still taking the challenge, and it's a challenge. And I know we've got some parents in here who have AP students in the room, and there's a lot, there's a lot. And if you're taking three or four of them, there's a wicked lot, a wicked lot of work.
So, can I ask you a question? Are you saying that when they are seniors, if they're taking AP classes, that has no impact on their final GPA?
Oh, no, it does.
Oh, no, it does, yes.
It's just the actual test itself. The College Board test does not factor in. No, it, it very much, just, they're weighted grades, and they're weighted very highly, so it does count, yep.
Okay. I didn't think I understood that right, so thank you for clarifying that one.
And to speak to Mr. Main's point, our, our low year is higher than the school I taught at and the school that I was administrator before, it was higher, our low years is higher than their highest years. So, it was one of the things that, that drew me to Douglas, was when I looked up the AP scores, and I thought it must have been a mistake at first. Because that is phenomenal. And we do, you know, we'll never be at a hundred percent, because the only way to be at a one hundred percent would be if you severely limit the kids who can take them. And that's not, we'd rather kids challenge themselves and get a two on the test, or get a one on the test, than, than not take a chance on, you know, just say, oh, I don't know that that kid's gonna make it, they better not take it. I'd rather have them take it. Because it's, even if they don't get that qualifying score, it's still a benefit to them to, to take the challenge, have it on their transcript, see, kind of get an idea of what a college course is like, so.
And that was a, that was a cultural shift, and Mr. Romano had mentioned, and if you looked at the numbers of participation, it was at fifty-seven, it was at sixty, it was at sixty-three, then all of a sudden, it went up to like a hundred and sixty. And that's when we made that cultural shift, which was that it was, what, we weren't gonna keep the APs as, as being sort of an exclusive club. It was going to be open to anyone who wanted to take on the challenge of, of an advanced placement course. And that's why our numbers went up dramatically. So, you'll still see schools who have really great scores, but they don't make it available to all students. They, they limit participation, they have, and we had it before. We had high qualification prerequisites, you had to take this, you had to take that, you had to take this, you had to have a ninety-five in this, and a ninety-five in that, and ninety-five in that, in order to get into, even to get into an AP. So, when we made that cultural shift, it has paid, I think it's paid tremendous dividends, because lots of students who never would have even considered taking an advanced placement class are taking advanced placement classes. And one thing that I always want to share, and I've always said when I was making the presentation that Mr. Romano made, is that it doesn't happen when they walk into Douglas High School in grade nine. This is a growth process from the time they walk into the primary school to the time they get into that testing. There's a, there's a, there's a learning curve, and there's a lot of people that are involved in that. You know, Mr. Rinn gets credit for being the stats teacher, and Ms. Brainy gets credit for being the AP Calc teacher. But a lot of things happened in a lot of other people's classrooms to get them to that point.
They don't suddenly become capable of doing calculus.
Absolutely, right.
So, that's never really get to the point where we suddenly can do calculus, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I think somehow, some way, we have another document that I'm gonna show you. One of the things that I wanted to do, and I will begin by saying that Mrs. Urquhart is not feeling well, she's been out, in and out the last couple of days, and so, but one of the things that I had asked her to do was, over the recent weeks, you've made some appointments, and I wanted to share with you some of the people that we brought in, and for staff members, on those new appointments that you approved just recently. But I also wanted to sort of give you a look at our, we never really, we always talk about the new teachers that we brought onboard, and I never really introduced you to the new para-professionals that we brought onboard. So, you have a piece of paper in front of you, but we also have it on the screen. And I want to be very clear that these are not all brand-new positions that we just implemented here at Douglas High School, these, I mean Douglas Public Schools, these are all positions that existed, plus a few that we've just recently added, based on service delivery grid in, in meeting needs of students. So, what I wanted to share with you is, is that these are all brand-new people to our district, and also share with you the fact that our para-professional staff are pretty well-educated and pretty well-prepared. As you can see, virtually all of them are, are higher education, degreed individuals from some very nice colleges as well. So, I mean, we're bringing in, and we're always, always looking for people who are well-schooled, very knowledgeable, and, but also have the ability to work with all types of learners. And so, as you look from, let's see here, Mr. Romano, Paul, is it?
Rochi.
Rochi. Okay. From Paul Rochi down are the new appointments that you, that you made. And you can see, he is just below Jessica Mulcahy. So, all of those from Jessica Mulcahy up were people that were hired for September and have been with us. The newer appointments are, remember, we had some openings that did not get filled, and then you appointed some additional people. So, I wanted you to see that we've brought in Paul, we've got April Bopre's at the middle school, she's a Framingham State graduate. We've got Annie DeWitt, who joined the Flex Center here at the high school, UMass graduate. Mr. Delaney brought in Tyler Morrell, who is a Fawley Dickinson University graduate. Mary Ellen Cole is at the primary school from, with Mrs. Socia, and she is a Leiden State graduate. Jamie Russo is filling in as a long-term substitute for maternity. She is a William Patterson University graduate, and Heather Blanchard is also a long-term substitute, and she is at the elementary school. And she is filling in for Jeanne Fitzpatrick, and she's there for the rest of the year. Has many years of experience as an educator as well, and she's a Worcester State graduate. And then Chris Gray at the very bottom has, is gonna be doing an AP, AP, ABA position at the primary school. So, we have one position still remaining, which is an ABA at the primary school. And we have filled all the other positions. As you know, throughout the, from the beginning of the year to now, we did have some people who left, opted to go elsewhere, or we chose to, to move on and hire someone else for the position. So, we are completely filled and have all of our para-professional staff in place, except for one ABA, which we, I know we had some interviews scheduled with Mrs. Urquhart being out. They have not held those interviews, so we hope to have that filled as soon as possible. But also, you know, as I said, we always talk about the faculty, the new faculty, and I just wanted to share with you that the people that we're hiring as para-professionals and ABAs and long-term subs are all educate, are all highly educated individuals as well.
Thank you.
So, there's a quick update. If I could ask Mr. Sederbaum to come up, and he and I will share a little bit of information with you on a, on a meeting that took place this morning. As you know, the last Professional Development Day was dedicated, half the day was dedicated to implementing the ALIS protocols within the schools with the teachers. Since that time, the middle school and the high school have done modified ALIS drills, which is really more instructional than actual physical activity. And Mrs. Socia will be up in a minute to talk about the, the most recent ALIS protocol that they did at their building. We met today, and we have put in place a plan for the upcoming January Professional Development Day, where we will spend two hours, again, in ALIS training. And so, the plan is going to be that we will do two schools in the morning, two schools in the afternoon. That way, we only need really two teams, rather than trying to get four teams. So, it works out pretty well. So, Sam can maybe share a little bit of what came out of our meeting today as well?
So, in January, we're hoping to reinforce with the staff some of the techniques that we practiced in the fall, try to solidify some of the things that we have gone over, get them to feel more confident, again, in their ability to implement ALIS. And one of the only ways to do it is to continue with practice. So, we'll be running some longer, more length drills. In the fall, we practiced five different scenarios. This time around, we're looking at maybe only doing two, that will be longer in duration, and then we'll have longer periods of time to debrief afterwards. The other thing that we talked about is looking into how are we going to equip our classrooms with materials, supplies, and other necessities in the event that we need to go into some type of enhanced lockdown. So, we discussed the different things that we could look at as far as options, looking at gathering donations from the community, whether it be from a store or a local business that could help us fill some of those holes that we're looking for.
Maybe take a ride down to Blissful Meadows and see if they want to donate any of their practice golf balls that can go into that bucket, that can be thrown at people and so forth. But, so there is some, there is, we have been looking a little bit more at things that we need to do within our buildings. So, for example, one of the, one of our dilemmas is, just this room alone creates an interesting piece. This door opens in, that door opens out. And so, you can secure this door, but it's much more difficult to secure that door. So, there are some things that we can do, and we are looking at some, some different activities. We have a student who is going to make some of those, what, call them chalk block, chalk blocks, that we're gonna put in a door that opens in with a piece of rubber on the bottom of them to keep them stable. That would allow us to, you know, to secure that door so that it won't be able to be opened. There's some other things that we have in place. The primary school has some older doors, and we're looking at devices that are fixed to the door, and they drop down, and will be, be used to secure the door. One of the things that we're talking about is looking at, we, is looking at some keys, and do we have the right keys in everybody's hands? They talk about having a, sort of a survival bucket in your room, which is a five-gallon drum that has things like Band-Aids and, and water and juice for, in case you have a diabetic student, and just things that you might need. They're expensive, you can go out and buy a bucket for, what was it, eighty-four dollars, I think it was, for one bucket, and all we need is, I think, two hundred and something of them. So, we decided that might not be the best way for us to go, is, is to buy the pre-made. And so, we thought maybe with the help of maybe the PTO and some other people to go out and solicit donations, we might be able to get those made significantly less expensive and have them in classrooms. So, the other piece of it that we will come back and share with you is that the buildings will have to do continued practice on this. And so, but one of the things that we're talking about doing in the high school and the middle school buildings is, the next time that we do it, I shouldn't say that, within the, before the school year gets out, is to do one that also involves the opportunity for students to evacuate the building, and what that looks like and so forth. So, where they would rally and how we would do that. So, for example, if Mr. Romano were to come on the speaker and say that there's a, an intruder in the building in the main foyer, we know the people in these buildings are gonna go down those stairs and right out the door and off into the woods and, and have a rallying point and so forth. Well, we want to try that. We want to try and see what it looks like to get all those students out in an orderly fashion and in a safe fashion. Whereas, that might not translate real well for the primary school or for the elementary school. And so, as we have talked about all along, different strategies for different buildings. So, the, the plan would be to do this in the January Professional Development with the teachers, and then to come back sometime and do probably internal work in the, the end of the winter, and then in the, in the spring, when the weather gets a little better, to try to do something that's gonna get us out of the building and go from there. If we, if we are gonna do an evacuation, I would look to also try to involve the state police and the, as many groups as we possibly can that would normally be here in an emergency situation, which is not always easy to orchestrate, so. But, so that's the plan going forward, and we will certainly keep you updated as to how that's gonna go. And I will be sharing this information, we'll be sharing it with the, the staff in advance, so they'll know that that's something that we'll be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sederbaum. If I could have Mrs. Socia come up, because one of the concerns that I know that you all had was, it has to be different for the primary school. So, Cindy and the staff at the primary school conducted a lockdown just recently, which went very, very well, but I'll let you talk about it.
You already covered everything, Mr. Mainz.
I'm not covering it, I didn't say anything about the primary school yet.
Keys. So, we did one on November twenty-ninth. Parents were notified in advance, which is normal, what we usually do. They followed the standard, traditional lockdown procedures. The doors were already locked, they closed the door. They kind of have a tiger paw in the room, where that's where the children go and huddle and stay in place in that corner. Nothing else was done, it was just close the door, it is locked, cover the window, things like that. We did have Officer Brett there to help us, we had the Police Chief Migliannico there, Officer Blanias, and then we had Mr. Mainz and Ms. Keegan there to just kind of go through the building with us. So, that went very well, the children were perfect, the teachers had practiced ahead of time with them, there was no tears, no one crying or anything like that. So, it was fine, it was quick. So, now it comes to, what do we do for the ALIS? So, if you know our building, it's one long hallway. Officer Brett came to our staff meeting the following Monday, and we talked about these different options, you know, what is feasible for us to do? One, we've got the age to deal with, they can't get out quickly, they're not going to go on their own. If you have one teacher in the room, that's a problem. Most rooms had a couple of teachers in there, whether it was a para or a teacher, so, you know, we talked about that, possibly sharing a staff. If you had three adults in your room because of one-to-ones, open the door, here's one adult, so we talked about doing that. Basically, it's barricading and not evacuating, is what we came out with. Ways to barricade the doors, like Mr. Main was saying, these little dropdown bars, all of our doors open in. So, we had talked about pushing a wedge under the door, but then we realized all the doors had a different spacing, so that would be difficult to do. So, then we looked at these other items, we are hoping to purchase just a set, so we could try it out in one room without purchasing for the whole building. We talked about tipping tables on the side, so even though they're sheltering in a corner, tip the table, would block them a little bit more. We talked about, Officer Brett gave them this handout with seven tips for the classroom setup, so that the teacher should be looking at, gee, if I have this near the door, I could slide it myself, probably, whether it's a cabinet, file cabinet, or a bookshelf or something like that. So, it's more of a barricading.
With your adrenaline flowing, I'm sure you can move anything.
Absolutely, right. The other thing, we found different things that we have never practiced. We always do a drill in the morning. So, what if we're in the cafeteria when it happens? And that's where the key situation came in. Whoever is in there might not have a key. If they're locked, they're unlocked, we don't know. There are two different keys for three doors, so we, we realized that we have an issue with keys there. Issue with bathrooms, who's checking a bathroom that's down the hallway to see if there's a child in there? So, we've got to work some of those things out. The library was a problem, a lot of windows in the library. Came up with a solution for that, they go to the classroom next door, which is the Title One Room. So, typically, there'd only be five or six children in there, so that worked out. The gym was another issue. They have an outside door, great, you can go outside, but we don't know what's outside, so we can't just send them out there. So, we have a room that they can go into, which is a teacher's lunchroom, but again, that's locked from the gym, so that teacher needs a key for that room to get in there. So, we're looking into keys, Jeff Colette already has, you know, proposal out there, looking for a bid on how can we deal with the key issue and rekey the whole building, so that we all have one key that fits everything. So, that was an option. Let's see, what else? Let's see, what else? We did talk about if, you know, worse came to worse, and we talk about evacuation, it would be the windows. It would be, if you know there's somebody in that hallway and we're saying there's an intruder in the hallway, hopefully they're not going to be able to get through the door because we've got them barricaded, but the window is an option. And then where would we be sending them? Teacher would be last, have to have a meeting place, and so on. And possibly have to break some windows, we don't know.
That was one of the things that we talked about being in the bucket, was that those devices that you can break the windows with.
Right.
Definitely different challenges.
Yes.
Because I'm picturing that building.
One hallway, it's just, yeah. I mean, if someone said, okay, intruder in toward the cafeteria wing, maybe two classes at the end of first grade could get out and head down Gleason Court.
Right.
It's risky.
Very, because the kids don't move fast.
Because you can move in a minute, and that intruder could be in that main hallway. It's just one hallway all the way down, and, you know, that's why we're, we're more into the barricading right now.
Yeah.
And the only way out would be through the windows. And the kids are small enough, I think we could. If we had to, that's the next best thing.
Interesting, though, because you can't practice that.
No.
And you know, when you think about fire drills and how much you practice on fire drills, that, you know, the kids aren't fearful when they hear the fire alarm go off because they know what they're supposed to do, but in this circumstance, it's just, it brings it to a different level.
Right. And then you're talking about three-year-olds in the preschool.
Yeah.
So.
And the kids are the first ones out?
That's what we talked, that's what Officer Brett said, you know, the teacher should be the last captain of the ship, last one off. So, I mean, it's different if you have two adults, three adults in the rooms, which preschool would. They would have three adults. So you could have someone go out and then take the kids and kind of shovel them down the hallway or wherever they're going to go, into the woods. But when you have one classroom with one teacher, first grade, there are a couple, that's why we talked about sharing somebody next door. If you know you have three, open that door and give us one so that they can help.
Right.
So I thought it went very well as well, the kids, you couldn't hear a sound, and that, that's pretty amazing for kids three years old, four years old, five years old. And when it was all said and done, I didn't see any kids that were upset or bothered or troubled by the whole thing. So your staff obviously did a great job of preparing them for that, which is, which we have to do, we're going to have to do. It's unfortunate that this is the world we live in, but we, we do. When I was a kid, we ducked and covered.
Right. I mean, we talked about our little bucket of what you have.
Bomb shelters.
It's micro tennis ball, just to distract. Officer Brett said, get some bee spray, the one that shoots like thirty feet.
We can't have it in school. There's a problem.
Yeah.
So they did a great job, and kudos to you and the staff and everybody, and they, it went really well, and for taking the time, all of us taking the time to really look at some of the, some of the barriers that we have to, we have to overcome if we're going to, we're going to be better prepared for that building, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Cindy.
Excellent.
Okay, then the last thing that I have is, is a short video clip, but I wanted to just preface it by showing it, telling you that at a recent Blackstone Valley Superintendent's meeting, the, Joe Maruscheck is the Superintendent of the Mendon Upton School District, and he wanted to invite school committee members, administrators, and other superintendents, put out the invitation to attend a presentation on Monday, December the eleventh, at seven o'clock at Knipmuk Regional. The presentation is a, is a full-length feature called Most Likely to Succeed. It is all about taking a critical look at the American educational system. It is a, it was a book written by Tony Wagner and Ted Dintersmith. Ted Dintersmith is going to be present at the presentation. He will be there to do a follow-up, and then also to do some, do a question and answer for us. It's an interesting opportunity to share with other Blackstone Valley administrators and school committee representatives. It was an awfully generous offer on the part of the Mendon Upton School District to invite us to attend. I am planning on attending it Monday night, and there is a sign-up in your packet, in your information, there is a place called the Genius Link. They have one for me, which is the Less Intelligent Link, but they do have a sign-up link called the Genius Link, and you can sign up for, to attend the conference, because seating is limited. They do, they are making it available to the parents of the Mendon Upton School District. So if they have, their auditorium is, you know, a little bit bigger than what we have, so they can seat a few more people. But it does come with a three-minute video clip that we could show if, if our cameraman and also craft technician can, can get this for us. Let you take a quick look at it. If you want to get a better seat by sitting up here, but if you can see there, that's fine. It's up to you.
Just watch it over there.
How would you do?
My head will be out of the way, too.
Little trick of the trade, huh? We mute this.
I'll twist them here.
Let's, Cam, action.
We divide the day up in high schools into bits of time, you know, into forty or fifty-minute blocks that we can, then we ring bells, and people start to shuffle around the building and do something else. That's an organizational device, it's not an educational principle. Ten University heads in eighteen ninety said, in eleventh grade, everyone should learn chemistry, and senior year, everyone should learn physics. A lot of these subjects are great, but these priorities were dictated one hundred and twenty-four years ago.
The old blue-collar industrial model of education is already gone. We're already living in its wake.
What happens to society when hundreds of millions of people have that aimless, rudderless feeling of, I've been replaced by a very small box? I don't know if there's a solution.
We all learn in different ways. This isn't the way to do it, this is the way that I did it.
If the assignment is, you get it back and you crumble it up and throw it in the trashcan, that's kind of one student experience. And if the assignment is to produce something that you're going to present to professionals in the field, that's completely changing the, the whole dynamic.
We are trying to have that type of perplexity and curiosity get incorporated in our students.
Saying your parents, all your friends' parents, and a bunch of people you don't know are going to be here to see the work you did, it creates a, an aspect of authenticity, because we are creating something for an audience.
The things I think in life that give us some of the greatest satisfaction is making something that wasn't there before.
And I can't wait for that moment when it does work, and I can be done with it. And it's like all leaves, it'll be one of the greatest moments in my life.
The kids have that feeling, it's transformative. I need this, and I need this.
So it's a conversation that, as an administrative team, since the summer, we've been really talking about, and you're going to hear more about it. We've been working on developing the district improvement plan. All of our administrators have done a ton of work around, and you'll hear this at the next meeting, around the MCAS and data and mining for data and using data to manipulate or to improve instruction, planning, assessments. The model that we've all gone through, it keeps things organized and it keeps things moving in the right direction, but as, as they said in that trailer, is that it's, it's probably a model that has seen its day and probably saw its day about ten years ago and really maybe even twenty years ago. And we, we really need to stop moving towards interactive learning, active learning. We really need to start getting into being able to explain and write about why you did what you did, how you solved the problem, what the problem really was, analyzing and critically solving a problem. And slowly but surely, we're moving in that direction, but it is, it's a cultural shift. It really is a cultural shift, because we're so used to, you know, the bell ringing and you go to your next period class. And, you know, there's, there's lots of literature out there now about linking your courses and making, linking classes and making them very interdisciplinary. All of that stuff is out there, and it's going to take time, it's not going to happen overnight, but we look to champion and look to engage and get our faculty on board and see the value and the merit in it. So I'm looking forward to going to see the presentation on Monday night. I'm a true fan of shaking it up a little bit. The, the standard model worked for a while, but it really doesn't work as well as it really, as it should work in our classrooms. So, you know, the old mindset was that if it was noisy in the classroom, the teacher wasn't doing a very good job, when the reality is, it really should be noisy in the classroom, and it should be collaborative, and it should be sharing, and it should be learning that's noisy and productive, however. So just something to think about. I think it'll be an interesting presentation, and I appreciate them making it available to us, and if you can attend, please, please do, and I'll see you there.
One of the keynote speakers at the MASC conference was Bob Taggett, I'm pretty sure I have the name right. He was, the whole, his whole presentation was about teaching, we're teaching twentieth-century skills in the twenty, in the twenty-first century, and how, you know, how many people have cellphones in this room, and everybody's holding up their cellphones, and, you know, they're saying, that our teachers are saying, you have to put the cellphones away, you have to put the technology away, and we're not teaching towards the future, we're, we're teaching the past. And so it's interesting that this has come up. It looks very good.
And technology has really changed the career path, and it really has changed what is, what are out there for opportunities. And so, you know, the mindset, and I, and I think that slowly but surely, we're getting away from this whole thing being a bad thing, and, and really understanding that technology. And we had this very conversation today in our admin meeting about taking a look at, we're now three or four years into our one-to-one here at the high school, a little bit longer, I think, at the middle school, and taking a look at the technology and are we getting what we thought we were going to get out of it? And more importantly, how are you using it? And how do we pair up our faculty with other faculty members to be the trainers on how to use tech? So in other words, if, if you don't use Google Classroom, it might be beneficial to spend a few hours in professional development with someone who uses Google Classroom all the time, so that maybe you can see the benefits of the technology. I mean, the same thing happened when they invented these things called computers, and everybody said that, you know, they'll never last, just like the television will never last either. So they were, they were completely wrong. But anyways, it's, it's a slow cultural shift, and you need to start somewhere, and I think that we're all on board with the idea of making that type of a shift. And we do have plenty of teachers in our buildings who are making that shift as well. But we, we need to focus more on it.
And I think that this is a conversation more for another time, but in the middle school, where we, we've come to not have the iPads coming home every day and partially so that we can make them last longer, and I know that part of the goal, Mr. Delaney, was a little bit more of the pencil to paper and, and getting back into those basics. I'm curious now, you know, I'd be curious to see at the end of the year, what your thoughts are, if, you know, as a, as a one-year experiment, if you think that, you know, it was the right route to take, or if maybe they, the kids should be still coming home and utilizing the iPads at home for their work as well. You know, there's, yeah, absolutely. I, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it's just a conversation to be had.
No, happy to report in, because it's very important. Again, and I come to you as somebody who was a, a major early adopter, proponent, sold two schools on going on a one-to-one, and Douglas Middle School being the third. Again, the decision to every, we still have a one-to-one iPad capability at the middle school. The not sending them home was multifaceted. One, as you mentioned, was resource preservation. They're breaking at an alarming rate, and we can't replace them because we don't have the money. One. Two, students are highly distracted with technology in front of them, and we have the ability, we, we, we have to have the ability to engage them and facilitate learning where they are, right? And being able to control content. Students have open access and free access to the internet and their own devices, we lose that control. And I welcome you to come into a classroom, you see it at home, you know, parents have that, that feeling, geez, I'm not exactly sure what they're, they're watching, because we don't, and it causes us unease. And guess what? When kids don't have any limits, they, they like to see where the edges are, all right? And that's, and that's a reality. So it was resource management, it was allowing them to focus a little better in an academic environment. There is still an absolute need for technology integration in every classroom in the middle school. It is still available to every student in the classroom. The facts are, and I'll let the cat out of the bag now, and this is part of our presentation on the twentieth, our scores have gone down as a district, right? Now, do we make the correlation that technology has made the score, scores gone, gone down? No, it's just a huge, that there's too many other factors. But we are, as Mr. Mainz said, taking a deep dive into where are we four, five years later? Are we getting a bang for the buck? Are we, do we have the right resources to get maximum efficiency and efficacy out of this opportunity? In middle school, we don't have technology class. We don't have a technology learning specialist. We don't have the maker spaces. So the things that a twenty-first century technology and learning environment are called for and required and are seen as best practice, we can't fund. So we can give the machine to the child, but we have to teach them how to best use that machine, and we, quite frankly, at this moment, don't have the resources to adequately use it to its maximum efficiency. So we're doing what we can, and part of that was bringing them home, maintaining the resource, getting them back to some basics, and, and doing what we can with what we have. So, you know, if it's a, if it's a major blowout mistake, I'll be the first to say that was on me. Thus far, our discipline issues around inappropriate technology use are way down. Our technology breakage and replacement is way down. Again, I'd be happy on the twentieth to report what numbers we have compared to last year, but anecdotally and quantitatively, you know, we're, it, and the teachers like it, too. So that's where we are, and just, you know, but all fair conversation is something that Mrs. Sosa is, is very interested in, you know, how are we doing? How could we be doing it better? Where are we failing? Where are we succeeding? So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Delaney touches on something that we talked about just recently at, at, at school committee, was the whole idea of the move towards technology being part of a curriculum that really begins in K and goes all the way to grade twelve. And one of the, one of the major components of that is having a teacher to teach them how to properly use a computer. The same way you had a teacher in front of you that says, stay on the home row, keep your heads up and, keep your head up in the whole nine yards. We need that. That's something that we need. And we, we've talked about it, and there's a, the state, the DESE, has issued a, a long-range plan, and they've, they've issued some curriculum guides that we can use. It's something that we talked about recently. We definitely, as a district, need to go to. We need to have specialists, we need to have teachers in front of students, and then, so that they can get the most out of technology. But another piece that is extremely important is the professional development that we need to have for teachers, so they can, so they can maximize the productivity of those, of those devices. Some of the best professional development we ever had was, I don't remember when that was, Cindy, remember when we had the Google Classroom in here, about three years ago, maybe four years ago? Yeah, and we had quite a number of teachers in here who had never been on a Google Classroom, never had a, you know, an Acer laptop that they were using, and by the time the second day was over, we had so many converts into Google Classroom, and now they're converting others into Google Classroom and how it works. We have the online textbooks, and, and they are, you know, one of the things is, it, it keeps the student, at the high school, for example, they bring home their Chromebook, they're not bringing home that book that's that big, and there's five of them that they used to put in their backpacks. It was, you know, they couldn't, they couldn't get up and down the stairs. So it is, it is a piece of what we do, but part of it is making sure that, A, we have a program in place that will support it, and B, that we are, our teachers are well-prepared to use it as effective as possible. And I can't tell you how many times I've sat here and done this and said, how do, what do I, what do I do next? And the kid can go.
Yeah.
And that doesn't look for the, good for the teacher, because then the kid thinks the teacher doesn't know anything.
Right. So, and, and, and they've, so they're not afraid of it. So and they've, so they're not afraid of it. It is, we're not putting them away and the computer's not going away and it's all part of what's going on. I'm glad that we're doing the one-to-one. I think it's productive, I think it's useful. I think having the technology in the classroom is certainly a great thing. I mean, people were fighting to get into a computer lab in this place. Cindy's room was right across the hall from it. And there'd be fistfights out in the hallway because I booked it, no, I booked it, no, I booked it. Well, that's not an issue any longer. So it really has paid off some serious dividends. However, I think that Donna touched on a very important point. Donna Sousa touched on a very important point. We really need to take a step back and look at, okay, we've done this for a number of years. What's good, what's not going as well as it could be? And, you know, is the iPad the right way to go? Or is it going back to what we're doing now at the high school, which is, I don't know what company we're using now. We were using Acer before, I'm not sure who we're using now. Chromebooks, what is it?
Dell.
Dell, Dell now. So, you know, and how is it being used? And when we first brought them into the high school, there were some problems with them and slowly but surely it went away. When we first said to the kids, you can carry these around if you want to, there were some problems. And now for the most part, there's not much of an issue with the kids having their cell phones with them. So, I mean, we're making strides, but this will be a barrier that we will have to collectively look at and get over at some point.
Thank you.
That was everything I had also. Except I didn't know whether or not the Santa company also delivered coal. Sorry.
I've been waiting for this.
I didn't get it at first. I really wanted to get it in right away and I missed it.
You've heard it all, I can assure you.
I just want to make sure that our viewing audience heard it as well.
FY two thousand and eighteen transfers and reclassifications. Do the transfers first. The first two on the listing came from administrators. The next five were just moving within school committee and superintendent training only because of the different object codes that the finance director, town accountant likes to use. We oftentimes have to move those around. And then I'm covering fifty dollars in memberships. And the last one is covering the long-term sub that Mr. Main's referred to earlier at the elementary school. And that's coming out of the line of funds left from that retirement that I am transferring over there. Does anyone have any questions?
I make a motion that we accept the school committee meeting minutes, I'm sorry. The school committee meeting, December sixth, two thousand and seventeen. FY two thousand and eighteen transfer request number seven. Sorry, I read it backwards. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have one reclassification. This is moving a membership out of the high school, I mean, the elementary school principal's due as a membership account. It was incorrectly coded and it should have gone into the district-wide student services dues and membership. So just moving that, doing a reclassification for that.
And I move that we accept the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen reclassification number four for the school committee meeting of December sixth.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thank you. And that's all I have this evening? Oh, no, I don't. That isn't all I have this evening? Okay, next on the agenda. The FY two thousand and nineteen, believe it or not, budget calendar summary. So this is just a synopsis. This will be changed, I'm sure, as we go along. I did last Monday send out budget forms to administrators, they're all preparing their budget. And they'll be submitting it to me on Monday, January eighth for me to begin filling in the superintendent's preliminary proposed budget that he will bring to the school committee at some point in February. We will be having a subcommittee meeting, a budget subcommittee meeting tomorrow morning at nine fifteen just to discuss priorities and other information having to do with the FY nineteen budget process. And if you look at the dates, January nineteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, there might be some movement with those dates there. But we are hoping to have the budget complete and for administrators to review on January nineteenth, the draft. And on the twenty-second, we'll start meeting. Mr. Maines and I will meet with the administrators go over all of their budgets. And then we will hopefully have the budget finalized to present to the school committee on January twenty-ninth. And we will presenting it at the school committee meeting on February seventh. We're hoping that will be the date. And the next day, if we do do that, we would send it immediately over to the town, finance director, town accountant, and the town administrator. And then the last three dates, particularly the February ninth through March twenty-sixth, as you know, we will receive at some point in February an appropriation amount from the town administrator, finance director, town accountant for the school department based on their very preliminary numbers. As you know, the cherry sheet would not have, they wouldn't have any final cherry sheet numbers and it is very preliminary. But it gives us some idea of what, if any, we're hoping not, but what if any we would need to reduce our preliminary budget by to bring it to that appropriation amount. Also, we don't know at this time when the finance committee meetings and hearing dates will be. That'll be somewhere in that timeframe, timeframe as well. And we do, based on the calendar that we have had for the past at least five to eight years, we do expect to have our budget hearing on April fourth. And then the annual town meeting will be on Monday, May seventh. There is some wiggle room in there basically between January and through mid-February as far as the preliminary work and when we get the appropriation figure. Geez, talking too fast maybe. From the town. So that's really the big thing is what that appropriation figure is going to be, as you know. That's really where the crux of the issue is.
Have any of the town processes changed based on the new administrator, town administrator?
I can't imagine Keegan would let the budget process change too much, but I don't know if it's been...
Oh, no, we haven't heard anything. It really wouldn't change any for us. As you know, under Mass General Law, there's a certain timeframe that backs up from the town meeting when we must turn it over to the town. And as you also know, from the town standpoint, it's a bottom-line appropriation amount. So more of it's our process over here as far as, and part of the, one of the biggest problems for me is that we have three contracts that haven't been finalized yet. So that affects both eighteen and FY nineteen. You know, it's a possibility, maybe soon they will be. That does affect the budget preparation as well. But I'll certainly update this as we go along for any changes, particularly in the January through February timeframe. And then I'll update it to let you know when the finance committee meetings and hearing dates will be as well. So we're just starting the process.
And our goal is obviously, as Courtney has said a number of times, is to maintain our staffing and maintain our programs to the best of our ability. That's our goal.
Very good. Anything else before we adjourn? We do have executive session this evening. So we have executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, where an open meeting would have an adjunct or mental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body. And to conduct collective bargaining. When executive session's concluded, public session will be adjourned and there will be no further public business conducted. And I do invite Mr. Maines and Ms. Keegan to join us this evening. So it is now eight-twenty, is that right?
Eight-twenty. No, that's not right.
Eight-nineteen, thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody.
We need a roll call.
Good night. A roll call vote, yes.
Benning and I.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Brett Argle, aye.
Sherri Zetlin, aye.